Good evening, everyone. The time is seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just give you glory and we give you honor. We thank you that you are the great I am and we are nothing without you. So, Father, we ask that you would meet us in this meeting, Father God, that you would bless us with your wisdom and your wise counsel and your peace. We thank you, Lord, that you are King of kings and Lord of lords. And, Father God, we just ask that you bless the citizens of Glen Arden, the employees that work for the city of Glen Arden, all the elected officials. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Guillaume. Councilwoman Hairston. Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
We have a quorum with four. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Council President.
Yes.
I would like to table Resolution R-41 2025 until the work session in May.
Forty-one, twenty-two-five.
That's the resolution to revise the rules, regulations for the feeds and schedules for the goal room.
Okay. And so then this will not be on the regular session?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any opposition to moving forward with the current agenda? Hearing none, by now it's consent. The agenda is hereby adopted. Today is the public hearing to hear from citizens on pending legislation. So, citizens today will have five minutes each to speak on any one of the pending legislations. Oh, ordinance ten dash twenty-two-five, ordinance eleven dash twenty-two-five, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-two-five, resolution thirty-four twenty-two-five. You can speak on R dash forty-one twenty-two-five even though we're not going to vote on it. It's been tabled. Our resolution fifty-one twenty-two-five, resolution fifty-two twenty-two-five, resolution fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five twenty-two-five. Those are the pending legislations that citizens tonight can comment on. So, if any citizens have comments on those pieces of legislation, please raise your hand and I'll... You can go to the podium.
Can you give them time to look for what they got to find it?
I'm sorry?
Give them time to find what they can talk about.
Sure, sure. Zero-nine dash ninety-five, no. And what's the other one?
Ten ninety-four. Ten dash ninety-four.
Ten dash ninety-four.
So, read some letter that was just now about permit parking.
Oh, permit parking. That letter was melted out? Well, okay, then I propose to... We can't add to the agenda if that's what I take a few people are here for. Yeah, okay. All right, so let me get to that. Is there any other comment on any current pending legislation? So... You don't have any of the packet that's on the back? That'll be on the first page, so... All right, ordinance ten is an emergency ordinance to amend ordinance zero-four twenty-two-five. It'll be on your first page. Ordinance eleven is an emergency ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Glen Arden for vehicles and traffic to get a stop sign monitoring.
So, ten twenty-two-five is about commercial vehicles, correct?
Correct. Correct. And then eleven is about a proposal for stop sign cameras. Resolution thirty-two is a resolution authorizing CPJA to complete a feasibility study. Resolution thirty-four is a resolution to increase the retirement benefits of the city employees. Resolution fifty-one is a resolution appointing Deion Jones to the Glen Arden Board of Elections. Resolution fifty-two is a resolution appointing Carla Foster to the Glen Arden Elections. Resolution fifty-three is a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for new sidewalk construction on Church Street. Resolution fifty-four is a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for sidewalk repairs on Glen Arden Parkway from Delwood Ave. to Echoes Ave. And R-55 is a resolution to approve a proposal from NZI Construction for asphalt repairs on Hay Street.
Let me ask you my question. I know it's not on the agenda, but I just want to make it real quick. I know you're talking about Delwood and I live on Delwood. And I meant to ask about the speed bumps. About, you know, the lady who caused that got ran into two years ago. The cars still coming past and they still missing that speed. They still not stopping at the stop sign. I'm just saying, if we can try to amend this thing for another time, I really need some speed bumps. My house sit right there on that corner and I don't want nothing to happen to my home owner.
Thank you. So...
I'm a homeowner, not a resident or homeowner. That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate that. And so, between one of the ordinances, for those online, the comment was made about moving forward with the speed bumps because they couldn't hear you, about speed bumps. And so, I think in conjunction with that, I know there's ordinance in here to help with the real issue... Not the real issue. Part of the issue is people stopping at stop signs, so that's part of the agenda. And then Councilman Herring has implemented, implemented, proposed speed bump program, which we can ask that Mr. Simpson could update you on before you leave here tonight on just where that's going to go. And I hear your concerns. I think that's a...
I just don't want my house ruined.
I completely understand. There was a house on Glen Arden Parkway that got ran into as well. So, but we'll talk about that, so don't leave before we have an opportunity to update you on that. But with that, I'd like to make a motion that we add to this agenda to allow citizens to speak on the parking, the RPP program. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, opposition?
Could you guys also add a stop sign?
One second. All right, so, hearing none, we'll add that to the topic. Council Clerk, could you see what that comment says, please?
Is there a floor of light for the in-person audience so the people can just...
Yeah, and so that's what I'm going to say. I can hear you, but the people online can hear you, so it's just me talking. So, the way this will work is that we have amended our agenda to be able to discuss, apparently, what you guys have come to discuss, which is the parking program. So, with that, now you're allowed to speak on that in addition to the proposed legislation. So, if you do have a comment, please go to the podium. What you would do is you would state your name or where you're from, and then you have five minutes to speak.
Where are you from?
Well, where you're from, yep. Yeah, one is Pass Martin Luther King, two is between Martin Luther King and Bright Sea. Pass Bright Sea is three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James. I was... I live on Echoes Ave. Now, I guess that's one of...
Yes, yes.
And I wanted to discuss about the parking. I know I was here before and we said we're going to put it on hold for like three months or something with the commercial things. But I don't have a commercial vehicle, but I just wanted to know what are we doing about... Because I got a rack on it, on my truck, and I just want to know what the way we going about that. And also, I've heard that we're coming up with some, maybe some parking passes or something depending on cars or whatever. Is that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is happening all over the area or just certain streets or...
In the letter, I believe that the pilot program is for certain streets to initiate the new parking permit with the intention of it going further if it works out. The goal behind it is to try to get some of the cars off the street because it's crowded, especially on narrow streets. And if we can get cars either in the driveway or where people are just, you know, just parking five or six cars and not allowing their neighbors to park, that we can cut down on that.
Right, because I live, like I said, on Echoes, and it's a narrow... It's not a big wide street. It's a narrow street. And we also have like so many cars that have Virginia tags on. Do we have a... Is there a time limit for these cars to set up? I know some have been sitting there for forever. And they never get moved.
You say they have Virginia tags on them?
Yeah, Virginia tags. It's a lot of cars.
Well, a program like this would actually, will help because if they're Virginia tags, then likely they don't live in the area. And so, those, that'll be the goal to be able to get those cars off the street. So, residents like yourself, if you have a car, can park on the street.
Right, because I have noticed just one right there where I live. And the guy parked there about a month and a half ago and nobody came back to it. It's just sitting there. Matter of fact, they towed it one time and he went and got it and brought it back. But the last, first time they towed, I don't think no tags was on it, but they came back with Virginia tags. But it's just sitting there. It's just... And I just have a concern about it just sitting there like that. But if we're going to the parking thing, maybe there's be something to work with it on.
Okay.
Ms. President, I just wanted to ask Mr. Green, because isn't there a time limit for people to get Maryland tags instead of Maryland?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I believe it's sixty days.
Councilwoman Jones?
That was the same question that I was going to pose about the Virginia tags. I think there's an issue between Maryland and Virginia as far as the registration. It's easier to get registration in Virginia. But unless they've enhanced the law for to, you know, to stop people from getting registrations in Virginia and living in Maryland, there's an issue right there unless it's been corrected.
Councilwoman Jones, thank you. Not that I'm aware of. As far as I know, you can obtain Virginia tags even with a Maryland address now. So, first, I believe you used to have to have a Virginia address. Now, you can get Virginia tags while having a Maryland address. And I think that's why you're seeing an increase in Virginia tags now.
Right, and I think they would... I read something where they were going to try to eliminate that possibility. So, I'm not sure if they corrected it yet, but I've heard where, or read where, they want to eliminate that possibility because they have so many people with Virginia tags in the state of Maryland.
They haven't done it yet. I've seen... I personally know someone that just went and got Virginia tags about forty-eight hours ago. I'm sorry, Friday of last week, they went and got Virginia tags and they have a Maryland address. So, they haven't put anything in place yet as it relates to that.
Thank you.
Do you know, I'm just curious, why? Oh, wow.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring one more thing into mind. I just wanted to say about the stop signs, I think we're coming up with a plan on the stop signs because I notice that's the school right there where I'm at. And people, nobody thinks about the stop sign. It just comes through there like it's not there. So, if we can kind of work up something on that.
Yes.
Because I don't want to see nobody, kids or minds or nobody get hurt just running a stop sign when you're supposed to stop it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we're in the process of doing that as an ordinance. And I think it's going through the proper protocol for us to move forward with some remedies for that. Captain Robinson and the chief did a great job of doing a study and showed that the people who violate the stop sign is somewhere between eighty to ninety percent range. So, it'll be good to have some more measures to stop people from doing that, especially for child safety. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sir? And if you don't know your board, you can just name your street.
I'm doing Tewa on Johnson Avenue. All right, so my grandma's been around here probably over forty, fifty years on Johnson. And it's a difference now because you got a different demographic of people that's here. So, we got to be aware of that and understand that you are going to get more cars. I mean, it's unfortunate that it's not going to be like it used to be in the nineties. It's not going to be like it used to be early two thousands. You are going to get more cars because there's more people here now. So, to me, it has to be understood now. Controlling the parking, I get, I mean, some people have seven, eight, nine cars. I understand that. But you do got some houses who might have somebody who might need to come back home. And now you might have multiple adults driving in at home. So, that's something that you have to think about. Also, I'm heavy on the commercial vehicle issue because you actually got people who work for themselves. And if I work for myself, what am I supposed to do with my vehicle? Even if it has no logo, no ladder rack, but if I work for myself, I got a van. You know what I mean? I don't have a trailer, but I got a van. And I can no longer have it, but I work for myself. Or you got the guy or female who works for a company who gives them a company vehicle. It's kind of hard to say, hey, you can't have something when we don't have HOA. So, it kind of hits us a little different because there's no homeowners association. So, it's like, hey, these rules are kind of put in place and it's starting to feel like it's running like a homeowners association. But I can't control... If this is how I make my money, it's kind of hard for me to say, hey, I got a house. Might got a personal vehicle as well. But now I have to take my vehicle, go pay for a storage because it's no longer allowed. That's extra money in my pocket. It's tight. Trump charging tariffs right now, so we all kind of tight for money. So, I think it's kind of difficult. And it kind of hit us a little different, the people who have the vehicles who got to go through that because at the end of the day, if that's what I have, now I can no longer have it. So, now I have to find another means. And not trying to be disrespectful, but Glen Arden's not going to pay, cover that cost. So, it's like now that I have to pay a hundred-plus dollars a month on top of the bills I have, on top of house tax, it's a lot. So, I mean, I understand it. And then to do that, I think there should be like maybe a limitation. Because, I mean, there are some people who have a fleet, you know what I mean? So, I get that. So, I'm not trying to get away from finding the control of it because there's some people who might have four or five work vehicles. And that is a little much. That's excessive. But finding a means of finding like a middle ground or something that's kind of like equal or fair to both parties, I think should be something to think about more than like a complete elimination. Because it's kind of difficult, I mean, because, again, if I worked for C-Pleasant Police, I'm sure if I could bring my police car home, that won't be considered a commercial. It would be considered, what you call it, a public service vehicle. But it got logos on it too. And it's not Glen Arden's. So, it has to be some level of fairness to the people who do go out, make their money other ways than going to a different job where they don't have vehicles and stuff like that. That's just my take on that.
I have a question for you. You said that you have a van but doesn't have any logos or any...
No, but the crazy thing is I wanted to put logos, but I can't because I'm prohibited due to the fact that it would be considered a commercial vehicle.
And do you know the weight of your...
It ain't ten thousand pounds.
Yeah, so, what's currently on the books that's actually being not enforced at the moment, which was presented and then we made a vote to just hold off till we rethink it, is that anything eighty-five-hundred pounds and lower is acceptable in the city. Before, it was you couldn't have it in the city at all.
So, they told my neighbor, he couldn't even have his. He got vans. Vans, but he got a logo on it. And that was the issue.
Yeah, and so, to your point, I don't think your van would classify as a commercial vehicle. However, you said that you want to now, you want to put...
If I wanted to, I can.
If you wanted to, you actually can. It'll have to just be within the parameters, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it just have to be in the parameters of what the county allows. So, the way it works is the county can be more restrictive but not less restrictive. So, in the county, the county says you cannot have commercial vehicles in residential areas. That's what the county says. And so, we can't trump the county on that. However, and I believe the county is ten thousand pounds. Yes, it's ten thousand pounds. Now, in the city of Glen Arden, the way it was before is that you couldn't have it in the city at all either. But the, what was proposed is that you can have it in the city if it's eighty-five-hundred or lower. And from what Mr. Green tells me, you can have logos on it. It just can't be larger than the size of a dollar. Am I correct?
That's correct. It can't be larger than four inches in height.
Four inches high. And that is, again, not a Glen Arden rule. That is a county rule. So, we can say, okay, it can't be more than four inches in height. So, we could say, oh, it can't be more than two inches high. It could be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive. We can't say, we cannot trump the county on that rule. That's not a city rule. That's a county rule. So, I would say that, you know, if you want, would like to put lettering on your van, you could. It just has to be in accordance...
Then you're restricted, right?
It just has to be in accordance with the county guidance.
I know my time up, but also the ladder racks too. I was told from code enforcement about the ladder racks because they didn't consider it a commercial vehicle.
And we are in the process of trying to look at what should be in there. The ladder racks, from my understanding, were not intentional. It's significant modifications, but significant modifications is arbitrary. I mean, it's relative. You know, you could think something significant. I could think, you know, significance in another way, so... But we have put a hold on the enforcement of this. And, you know, until we have something that is beneficial for the community at large, we should be fine. However, anything on a county level, that's out of our hands. Yeah, Councilman Herring?
Can I add a few clarifications? Because I'm almost sure that the county standard is eighty-five-hundred, correct, Mr. Green?
That is correct.
Yeah, so anything over eighty-five-hundred pounds is not allowed in the county as a commercial vehicle?
And then you should be fine.
But, and I think, and our ordinance actually says that you can put a commercial vehicle in the driveway, correct? But not on the street.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you can have a commercial vehicle in the driveway, but they got to, they can't have the racks or the, what you call it, racks or whatever, ladder racks or something else.
That's also correct. Even still, whether it's in their driveway or on the street, if it's in their driveway, it still cannot be more than eighty-five-hundred pounds. That's the maximum that any of these vehicles can be is eighty-five-hundred pounds. Let's say you're under eighty-five-hundred pounds, then it goes to whether you have lettering on your vehicle. Some vehicles are completely wrapped. Those are commercial vehicles. You can't have those even if they're under eighty-five-hundred pounds. And then you may have like the cargo vans that may have magnets and things like that on it, which is not larger than four inches high. Those are fine.
I mean, with the rules, it's almost like you don't want to... It's kind of like if you got this, then, okay, we can move to the next thing. You something like to pursue?
I completely understand. I don't, I don't agree with the rule. I have a, I have a neighbor who does real estate and he puts, you know, his real estate on the back of his car. If it's over four inches, then apparently it's, you know, not legit. But I haven't seen a county pull him over yet or give him a ticket yet. But I agree with you. I don't, personally, I don't necessarily like HOAs or anything because I mean, if it's my house, it's on my property, it's, you know, it's mine. However, the county has its laws and there's nothing that any council member up here can do about it outside of advocate against it at county council meetings.
I have CPJ's on my truck and I had ladder racks, I mean, five thousand pounds. I had a ladder rack on these that I was taking up too much space. I got three tickets and a total sign on it in the past.
From the county?
From Glen Arden.
All right, well, just, so, they can't hear you online, so they're going to think I'm talking to myself. But just stay behind and we can, our code enforcement officer can, will connect with you, all right? Sir?
Yeah, my name is Victor, same war, war one. I would just like to add basically to the same thing. A few years ago, these, well, first of all, I lived in the city for twenty years and it's never been this bad. It just seems like it's getting worse and worse as the years go by. Now, you guys do have to understand that the population is changing as Tewa mentioned. And majority of the people that live on this side of the city are basically blue collar people. People that need, you know, a car to transport themselves. I personally have a business vehicle considered a commercial to you guys. I work far from here, in Virginia mostly, and I drive two, three hours going and then coming back. So, for me to not even be able to park a commercial small van, cargo vehicle, under ten thousand pounds, it just seems unfair because that's, that's my main of, you know, feeding my family. So, I'm sure the city's not going to be willing to be paying everybody's bills that has a commercial vehicle to commute. And I understand the frustration of some neighbors that may complain about it. But as far as I know, where I live, it's not an issue because nobody, we're not blocking the parkings and everybody has space to park. So, I just want to add to that, that it's just unfair because, like I said, that's, that's how I bring bread to my table. And so, I was told that if this vehicle doesn't get removed by the weekend, I'll be getting a fine of two hundred dollars a day. That's really unfair.
You say you got something this week that shouldn't?
This coming weekend. I have up until the weekend to have my van removed.
I'm sorry. So, you say you just got the ticket?
No, I didn't get no ticket. I got like a notice.
This week?
Correct. This past week.
Yeah, that should not be, but...
And I was also told I couldn't, I cannot have my vehicle in my driveway. That commercial vehicle. So, I can't have it on the street, but I can't have it on the driveway. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, that doesn't make any sense. As far as I know, I've, haven't failed to pay my taxes to the county or to the city. I love this city. Like I said, I lived here twenty years. I even worked here before with the police when I was in my teens. Also worked in the ballroom, so I know the city pretty well and I definitely love it here. But it's just pushing me to a limit where I feel like, hey, I may, might as well just have to sell my house and move out. Because it's just, it's just not, I mean, there's, there are other important things that you guys, code enforcement should be implementing. Like I've seen a couple houses that are, you know, neglected, they're not cleaning them up. They got vehicles in the back that they seem like they need to be repaired, they're missing parts. I don't see them implementing that and they're like riding in the focal view, if they drive by looking for that, they're gonna see that. But here they come and they annoy the people that, you know, are hard workers and working out there. I'm busting my ass out there, working eight, ten hours and I come and get this notice. It's not unfair, it's not fair for me. And I don't think it's fair for anybody else. And I feel his pain.
Well, first let me say I completely understand and I completely agree with you. I have questions, so is your work vehicle over eighty-five hundred pounds?
It's not.
Okay, so in, I think we, there might be a miscommunication because with your vehicle being under eighty-five hundred pounds, first of all, you should not have gotten that letter because there have been, there's been the hold placed on the enforcement of, what is it? Ordinance four dash twenty twenty-five. So nobody in the city should be getting the, a notice of a ticket or a removal.
My neighbor across the street got a ticket.
Yeah, are we, are you guys still sending out tickets?
I'm not aware of his particular situation, but again, for these vehicles that are clear cut, commercial vehicles that have wrap on them, that have lettering that's over four inches and is outside of the weight requirement, we are still enforcing those. But vehicles that are not, that are under eighty-five hundred pounds, that does not have the writing that's larger than four inches and we are not doing anything with pickup trucks and work vans.
So I take it your vehicle has lettering?
It has a logo, I'll be honest, it has a logo. But again, that's my, that's the way I bring food to my table. And as far as I know, the county is not enforcing this, it's just the city of Glen Arden. Because I, I commute a lot to other cities, local cities, Landover Hills, Riverdale, Blaineisburg, there's a few others. I see a bunch of other commercial vehicles out there. And if they were getting fined, if they were getting ticketed, they wouldn't be there every time I drive by. And on top of that, I've seen on this side of the street, a commercial vehicle has been sitting for a long time. And I'm sure if they, if, if they got a ticket or if they got a warning, that van would have been there, right? So it's just not fair that we on this side were getting fined, impacted. And it could be different up there, you know? Financially, people could have a higher income up there, but it's not fair, it's, it's just not, it's not fair. We're all in the city.
Another question, so are you guys going around measuring the inches on the, the lettering on the vehicles?
The ones that we are addressing are clear cut. You don't have to measure them, you can look at them and see that they're larger than four inches. So no, we're not actually measuring. If you look at it and you can't tell that it's clearly larger than four inches, then we don't, we don't bother those. But for these vehicles that have wrap on them, for these vehicles that have lettering almost the size of the vehicle, we are addressing those.
And is it, is it in our code?
Well, our code says no commercial vehicles.
My neighbor's grandson has, he had a small magnet for his company. He, the, the city got him to remove it as well.
So in our code, in our code, I know we, we did actually pass ordinance four. But is there anything in our code that specifically states that the lettering can't be over four inches? I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, and then I'll let you go.
I just want to say, we actually addressed that issue when we passed it because they added a line in there that says we would adhere to all county code. And county code says nothing larger than four inches. So basically, you can't supersede county code, so you gotta enforce county code because we just suspended our code for three months. So basically, county code says, and, and we put that in our code specifically, because I remember it was added, that line was added that we would adhere to county code requirements when it comes down to commercial parking.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm done.
It was my understanding we suspended the enforcement of it, but not the, the, we, I mean, you can still park something up to eighty-five, eighty-five hundred pounds in the city. We just paused the enforcement of it.
Yes, but the enforcement that we really paused was the work vehicle and the pickup trucks. That's what the issue was. We continue to enforce these clear cut commercial vehicles. Again, these vehicles that are completely wrapped, these, these vehicles that has lettering that's larger than four inches and that are over ten thousand pounds. So you may have a vehicle that's, I'm sorry, over eighty-five hundred pounds. So you may have a vehicle that's under eighty-five hundred pounds, but they still have lettering that's on the vehicle that makes it in violation of the Prince George's County Code.
I'm just asking questions, I'm not pointing a finger at you. And Councilman here, you said that in our code, it says that we'll follow county code?
It said we would adhere to county standards or county code. And I wish I had, let me see. Yeah, we actually, that was actually put in there. It wasn't in there before, but they, they added that in the last minute.
Which, which one is this? Which ordinance?
The ordinance that was passed on the commerc, the definition, I mean,
I don't see it.
Okay, so like on the, on the, one that we passed, it says parking regulations, and then it has section four. And then it's section four, regulation of work vehicle parking. All vehicles, all work vehicles, including Class C passenger cars, Class D motorcycles, Class M multi-purpose vehicles, light duty vans and pickup trucks under eighty-five hundred pounds must be parked and on the driveway and are not permitted to park in the city or as otherwise limited by Prince George's County restrictions. And that's in our code. So the restrictions clearly says that you cannot have a vehicle parked in a residential neighborhood with lettering over four inches in, in a height. So that's where, that's where you run into the issue at. So county code is basically what you're?
Or it's otherwise limited by Prince George's County. Because it doesn't say anything about the lettering, but it does say, or as otherwise limited by Prince George's County restriction.
Mr. President, the, the, the restriction for the county is, that is a restriction on the county, the lettering.
Yeah.
That's in their code.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
Yes, I have the county code right here.
Go ahead, Vice President Ferguson.
Yes, Mr. Green, I was gonna ask you, did you have the county code and could you read it? And also, as it pertains to the work and commercial vehicles? And when was that implemented? And also, I have seen in different municipalities or just different areas, a lot of vehicles that we would never allow. I mean, they're like RVs and everything. So would it be safe to say that if they are in these particular areas, that it's just because that particular municipality or town is not, they're not in compliance? Because i- in my opinion, it would be safe to say that a county code, which is Prince George's County Code, would apply to any area, town, city that is in Prince George's County, is that correct?
Yes ma'am, that's correct. What the case generally is, is that in municipalities, the, the county, for the most part, they try to stay out of your area of operation unless you invite them in. But in this particular case, we have suspended our own ordinance, so we are enforcing the county regulations. But in most cases, that's why you see all these particular vehicles in these other areas. Because the county, they don't do a lot of enforcing of their own, of their own laws. But as it relates to the Prince George's County law, it's the new code section twenty-seven dash six-three-zero-five H two D. And this, as far as the best of my knowledge, became a new law in January of twenty twenty-five. They already had something on the books, they just revised this particular law. And it reads as, violation. Parking of commercial vehicles on the zone property outside of a wholly enclosed garage is restricted to one commercial vehicle, which may not exceed eighty-five hundred pounds. Manufacturer's gross vehicle weight specification. May contain no advertising, other than a firm or company name not exceeding four inches high. May not include vehicles that exceed three thousand cubic feet of load space and may not include state platform trucks, dump trucks, crane or tow trucks and vehicles with dual rear axles.
So a couple things. One, I just want to correct the record, we did not suspend ordinance four, we suspended the enforcement. Ordinance four is still intact, so people can have vehicles up to eighty-five hundred pounds in their driveway. So I just want to put that on record, so we're not going around putting ticks on people, saying that it's been suspended, so we're following the, the county. That's, the enforcement has been suspended, that's it. I, yeah, I, I can't. One, I'll just give a personal opinion. Because the county doesn't go around enforcing the rules, that's their problem. That's just a personal opinion. I, I do understand that the city has, we have our own code. I think the, I think it sucks, there's no way around it. Unfortunately, I can't get around the county. No city council member can get around the county. What the county says is that, now I understand, I understand what you guys are saying. Well, why can't you then just enforce city codes instead of going around focusing on county codes? Hundred percent understand that. I, I think you get into the slippery slope. Personally, I agree. As a council member, I think you get in a, in a slippery slope of saying what you enforce and what you do not enforce. It's sort of like a police officer saying, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm going to enforce this law, I'm not going to enforce that law, even though it's a county law. I mean, I, I think that's kind of a, a sticky situation for our code enforcement officers to be in. At this point, as I said, the ordinance, the enforcement of the ordinance four has been suspended. I do encourage you though, and I, I, one, I want to say I appreciate, you come here. I appreciate that you guys have come to this meeting to voice your opinion. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry ma'am, she was first, and then I'll come to you. That's all right. I will say, in addition to coming to here to voice your opinion, that you absolutely need to go to the county. I mean, because there was just, the county passed another law, another, amended another rule that allowed people to build in non-conforming lots, which allowed a, a builder to build a house literally right next to another house. So for the person who's been living there for, at this one house for a long time and had a, a deck and with, with a lot of sun, because the county amended its rules, allowed to develop, a developer come in and now that person has a house maybe within two feet of their deck. No sun, nothing, there's nothing that we could do about it. So I commend you guys for coming to this council, to the city council meeting. I think you also need to go to the county council meeting and make sure your voice is heard on that level so that we're in alignment with one another. Because I agree that, you know, times are changing. I'm, you know, I'm probably come from a home less than a blue collar, we were just poor. So, you know, we need to accommodate the now and not the, you know, what happened forty, sixty years ago to make life easier for all of us, middle-class working folk, so. Thank you for your, for speaking about your concerns. Ma'am?
Good evening, Councilmember, Vice President, everyone. My name's Ray Smith, I'm in Ward one. I'm here to discuss the cones in the public parking spaces where they're taking spaces, putting cones there where you can't park, which I think is a problem there. Where they just put the cones and you can't park. Councilman Harrington, I know you probably have saw it too. I think that's a problem. Another thing, when you come down Glen Arden, the Parkway, you come down that, I can't think of the street, to one, Western Street. Anyhow, there's potholes there. Hayes, we discussing all this? Three, it ain't two, it's three. And tearing up our cars. So we're up here talking about this, let's talk about that since we're, we're paying taxes and stuff. Another thing, I'm a, I'm not a resident, I'm a homeowner. I want to make that clear. I've been here for thirty-plus years, my mother-in-law, which is my son, she's been here fifty-plus years. We talking about digital parking passes, you talking about two. I live in a four-bedroom home. Me, my daughter and my granddaughter and my son. I have two vehicles of my own, my daughter have one and my granddaughter have one. That's four. There's no way possible I'm only gonna be able to get two digital parking, even though I have a driveway. That's not fair to me, I pay taxes. Our taxes are high in the town of Glen Arden, they're the highest. I don't think it's fair. I respect all of you all, because you all have seen me here before, you know? But I just wanted to bring those particular issues to you all. Also, I don't have a problem with my code enforcers, I don't. What I do have a problem with is when you have someone's house that's been messed up for five years and we up here discussing parking passes and we got potholes. And like I said, I need speed bumps. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, I just retired September thirtieth, I'm home every day now. I don't need nobody running to my house and I don't need no problems with the town of Glen Arden. I'm being honest. Thank you all.
Thank you. So you live in the city of Glen Arden? Okay. Okay. All right, Councilwoman Jones?
In reference to your citing of the cones, I have been taking pictures of cones that are on Hayes Street, they were removed. If you could send the code enforcer a picture or if, just give him the address so he can? Well, I know, but I'm saying, I, I addressed the ones that were on Hayes Street. And then what I'm saying is if you can either give the code enforcer the address or give a picture so that he can see, so that they can see them. Because I know that there are cones all over the city and that, that needs to be addressed. But there is one, that one area on Hayes Street that citizens were like, you, you got to do something because they cannot keep putting these cones out here, you know, and it's, it's, it's a public street.
Can, can I ask a question? Can we, I mean, if I saw a cone, I would just move it and park. No, but I've, I've seen it and I've actually moved the cone and parked, so, but I. Okay, I understand. Mr. Green? I'm sorry, Vice President Ferguson, now I come to Mr. Green.
Were you gonna talk about the cones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was gonna talk about Hayes Street.
Do you want, you want to wrap up the cones and then we go to Hayes Street? Go ahead, wrap up the cones.
Thank you for bringing that up. Code enforcement, we are extremely aware that these cones are out in the community. And we are making it a top priority to, to patrol and remove them. So as we see them, we remove them. So if you see them out there, please give us a call, let us know and we'll take care of it. So if you see them out there, please give us a call. Let us know, and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, they do.
Verbal something. Maybe they need a verbal. Somebody needs to go up and talk to them and let them know that they can't do that.
Do we know who's doing them?
If I may, um, so what we do is when we see a cone, if we cannot identify the home that it belongs to, we go and we knock on that particular door to have a conversation, uh, with the property owner. Give them an opportunity on the spot to remove it. If they don't, we take them. If we don't know where they belong, then we take them immediately anyway. So either way, they remove them or we remove them.
Buckets.
Yes. Anything that's in the public right away, we remove them.
Wow. Man, that's real. I've never seen a bucket. No, you're not the stepkids. No, no. Nah, it's, it's, it's one Glen Arden. And if there is a discrepancy in how things are being administered, then that needs to be rectified immediately. Um, there, there's a lot of history, probably the richest history in, in Ward One. Um, but there's, laws are laws. In the same way that I'd, that I'd say that personally, uh, you know, I would probably, you know, only enforce the city and not the county. But I understand his code of ethics and, and what he has to do as a code manager enforcing anything that's on the books. And that's across the board, whether you're Ward One, Ward Two, or Ward Three. So if, if, if there is a discrepancy. Please, please do. I, I know of only one cone that a neighbor of mine puts out, and they don't put it out to stop anybody from parking. They actually put it out so they don't get hit. Uh, because that neighbor had his son's car hit three times. The last one, it was totaled, because. Yeah, the, can you mute whoever? Uh, I think she accidentally came off. Uh, because when you come around that roundabout on Glen Arden Parkway, like you're going to Costco, people are speeding in one car, and it shook my house, hit the, hit his son's car so hard, it shook my house, and I went outside. And that was his third time getting his car hit. So he puts a cone right behind his car, so it's a reflector when people come, it doesn't get hit. Which is why I think Councilmember Harrington's, uh, what did you call it? Speed bump pilot program, which we need to really, I don't, we need to, yesterday, uh, need to make sure that we put those up. Um, it's traffic safety across the city, not just in Ward Three or Ward Two or Ward One. Across the city is a huge concern. Uh, when I saw that there was no crosswalk by Glen Arden, uh, Glen Arden Woods, I immediately spoke with, uh, Mr. Simpson. They put a crosswalk, because the kids, you know, just. That, I, but I, my point is, that was Ward One. That wasn't Ward Three. That was still Ward One that, that was implemented. So there wasn't a special treatment for any other ward. That was in Ward One that I saw that, and they immediately put something out there. Uh, and, and this is what it's for. I'm glad you guys are here, because you can voice your concerns, and so we can hear them and make sure we're holding the, uh, city government accountable in implementing traffic safety measures so that you can be safe, no one running to your house, and that kids can walk across the street safely. Uh, and I, one other measure we just put, that we're going to and process putting in place is speed cameras. So we're working. Uh, we just need to get, do a better job of being more efficient and getting things out out there in time. All right, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, um, thank you, Council President. We do have a, um, resolution that, um, approved the repairs of Hayes Street, those potholes. Um, Mr. Simpson, could you elaborate on the timely of the repairs?
Uh, yes, uh, there is a resolution that's now to, to clearly make sure that Hayes Street is addressed immediately. Uh, that's next week. Uh, I have talked with contractors. Uh, I, I believe within a week to two weeks' time after that resolution passed, maybe sooner, uh, you will see the work. You should have already seen certain markings, uh, in the street of Hayes Street, um, in preparation to do a full-depth patch and to take care of the three major potholes that are on Hayes Street. My pleasure.
Hey, could you, I'm sorry.
And so, um, I live in Ward One. I've lived in Ward One since nineteen fifty-nine. So I know, you know, what you're talking about, but if you, um, wanna hang back later and let me know a little bit more about what's going on on Dalewood. But I, like I said, I've seen those cones, and again, this is something new. This is not something that's been happening. So I think, I don't, I wouldn't say the cones are necessary because of, um, what ward we in, or, you know, um, it's just the mindset of the people that, that's doing this, because not everybody's putting cones out. And so, um, I, I, you know, because I, I, um, went down Hayes the other day, and I mean, it just looked like on both sides, it was just cones. And I'm like, who are these people? Put, you know. Nonetheless, um, maybe we can get, you know, maybe a postcard or something out, and, and maybe we can do something where we have to, um, and maybe they can incur a fine, because, um, you know, those cones are there, and it could be an emergency. We here can need to come in there. And, and this, I mean, it literally was back-to-back cones on each side. And so, um, thank you, Council President.
They can't hear you. No, 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 because I have two people have their hands up, and I want to give them opportunity. So I, um, a lady back here, you're first, and then, uh, Tamika Jones, you'll be next. So I have someone in-house first, and then next will be Tamika Jones. You come on, ma'am. Just one thing, the, the speed bump program?
Yes, uh, we do have the information. It's been sent out to council, uh, for their review. I believe, uh, there's some discussion relative to confirming some of those locations that the engineers had identified as, uh, issues. Uh, and, and as I get that feedback, we'll, we'll make sure we implement that as well.
Okay. Can I just follow up on that? Because I did ask about that last time, and I did say that I don't need TPJ telling us where we need speed bumps. You need to be talking to this council and the people who live in the community, because where they may say they need speed bumps, they may not need them. We see where we need speed bumps, so they need to talk to us. So I'm not, I haven't seen this list yet. I don't know what you're talking about. I don't even know what they proposed. But, um, yeah, again, we did, we need to decide where they need to go.
Okay, I'll make sure that's sent out.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, we send it sometime. It gets hung up, because I haven't seen it. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Sandra Robinson, and I'm a homeowner, one of the originals since nineteen sixty-five. I moved away, and I came back in two thousand seventeen. And of course, there's a lot of changes, and that's being anticipated. But I'm feeling very unsafe now. I'm looking and seeing the community as a result of the cars or the trucks that's being parked all on the street. Where I live at, I live on Tyro Drive. We do not have sidewalks. So it's starting to look more like an industrial park instead of a residential area, um, as I said. Also, the safety issue, because you do have these trucks that are parked along the street, and Tyro Drive used to be enclosed. But since they opened it up to get to, to the shopping center, I'm recognizing that now about seventy percent of the traffic that's coming down is traffic that's going to the, uh, shopping center. As a result, those of us that are residents there, we're looked at like, like, say, for instance, I used to do a lot of walking. Uh, but, you know, right now, I'm not able to walk like I was. Very unsafe, because number one, we're dealing with the traffic that's, um, we have speed bumps, but I'll be honest, they're not serving any purpose. The average speed looks like to be about forty-five miles an hour in where I live at on Tyro Drive. Imagine trying to walk, and you have ten vehicles that are lined, and you have no sidewalks. And you're, it's a safety issue. I have almost, several times, almost got hit, because there's nowhere for me to go. Uh, and especially now that I am a senior and I don't walk the fastest. You know, one or two cars or trucks is okay, but when you're looking at a whole line of trucks and you're trying to find a way how you're gonna be safe when you don't have a sidewalk, that's an issue. Very much of a sa, and so my number one concern as a homeowner is my, is safety, which is not happening. Number two, as a homeowner, it is now turning from looking like a residential environment to an industrial park. So that, that, it within itself, I'm quite concerned about that as well. So that, that's all I would like to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Ty, Ty, Tyro, uh, it's on the RPP. It's, it might be, because I, I, I recognize that, because I actually leave out the back way to get to, uh, Martin Luther King going to fifty, and there has to be like ten pickup trucks. And it's hard to see even around the corner to, to get around there. Um, and so I completely understand. Um, and I, I think it, to that point, I, and I recognize that there aren't any sidewalks there. Um, to that point, I know we talked about this before, about people not wanting to give up some of their yard for sidewalks. Uh, but definitely looking at, um, pedestrian safety on, on those streets. But thank you for, for commenting, and, you know, we'll see what we can do from a, a, a code enforcement perspective to make sure that, at least on that end, as it relates to, you know, this enforcement in Ward One, there needs to be, I'm not saying that you're not doing that, uh, but making sure that, I think that's, uh, so is Bethel, then it's Tyro, Tyro?
Tyro, Jeff, and Cousins.
Jeff and Cousins. There has to be about ten, ten white pickup trucks on that block. So, um, you might want to look at, at that as well.
Well, Mr. President, imagine, can I just follow up on something? Let me just say, that is one of my biggest concerns. What, um, the resident said is that we are a residential community. We are not a commercial community. You know, you, I mean, it has been proven over and over again that when you have more commercial vehicles in your community, it brings down your home value. The biggest asset of residents in this community is their homes. So you've got to have some type of control in the community when it comes down to commercial vehicles. Again, it's a safety issue, but it's also a, a financial issue, because again, if you need to get a, a mortgage on your loan, or you gotta get, uh, refinance your house and pull money out of it, you want to get as much as you possibly can, or if you want to sell it, you know. So again, I mean, you gotta look at, you gotta weigh everything. It can just be one-sided or the other. You know, we have to look at both of it, because again, like the citizen says, she's bought a house in the city. She came back to the city, and she bought a home in the city. She is invested in the city. She wants to be able to move freely through the city safely, as well as protect her investment, which is her home. So that's what we gotta look at. It shouldn't be looking like an industrial district. I mean, it's been said, I mean, it's been proven over and over across the country. Judge after judge has said it's completely satisfactory to ban commercial vehicles in residential neighborhoods, because it does, it's been proven that it brings down the value of people's homes, and it's also a safety issue. So again, we gotta balance that. Uh, you know, you gotta look at all options, but again, the biggest thing is that people have homes that they've invested in, and the value of your home should not be going down, because you want it to look like a residential area. I mean, it look like a commercial, um, commercial area. I mean, it's still a residential area, and that's why the county has the zone, has the rules in place that they have. They, they don't come into the municipal, municipal governments to enforce, because, but they can if they really want to, if they're invited in. They can come in and enforce that, and I guarantee you, if they, if we invited them in, a lot of the vehicles that are in here will probably be cited. I mean, I think we're being, we're being a little bit lenient with the piece of legislation we're bringing, because we're saying you can have it in your driveway, you know, to a certain weight limit. Um, but then I think it's too restrictive when it says you can't have your personal vehicles on the street. That's where I have, that's why I'm bringing this piece of legislation, so people can put their, can, can have a personal van or a personal pickup on the street. But again, it comes down to, again, the aesthetics of the community, the value of the homes, and the safety. So you gotta look at all of that. Again, it's a residential community, not a commercial district. So, thank you.
They can't, they can't hear you. But I will say, I, I, I agree. To the person that's parking ten of those vehicles on the street, that, that's overkill. That's not. But if I am a, if I have a business, let's say I mow lawns, and that's how I feed my family, and I pick it, I park my truck, one truck, in my driveway, that's perfect, middle-class. But I don't. And, and, and I would go to the county and argue against that, but I'm, I'm well aware of the, what I paid for my house. And I'm well aware that I paid my bills for my house, and if the truck that's parked in front of my house is paying my bills on time, then I should be allowed to park my truck in front of my house. But again, that's a, that, you have up to eighty-five hundred pounds, but as far as the lettering, uh, and anything over that is a county issue. And we, that battle has to be fought on that level and not the county, the city level. Is, is it pertaining to?
Yes, I, I need to, um.
You, you think it's not on?
Yes, before you, uh, call the, um, next person that's online, it's pertaining to what I have on my phone. So I wanted to show the, uh, city council this particular vehicle that, um, that Tamika Jones is going to speak about.
Uh, okay, that's fine. Ms. Jones?
Yes, hello?
Yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I wanted to speak, speak on, just what Mr. Green, uh, mentioned. Um, the gentleman that spoke, um, recently about his commercial van. First, I wanted to clear up. So the, the council agreed that if we came across any commercial vehicles to allow for the person, allow them seven days to comply. So that's where the seven days came in, and that's exactly what I presented to him. Of course, even give him more than seven days. Um, and it wasn't just a conversation about just removing it, but it was a discussion. It was an edu, a time to educate. I explained the process. I explained why this came about. I also, um, asked, is there something that maybe, and this is what I've been asking many people with these commercial vehicles of where the companies that they work for, you know, is there something maybe, maybe your company has another style that you can have? Maybe something that will fit the needs of what you need to do pertaining to your business, but more residential friendly? You know, all of these things. Um, no letter was issued. It was more, it was verbal communication. It was not a letter. If anything, I'm not even sure, if anything would have been a notification tag. I can't remember if he had that notification tag once we had the conversation, because I always like to speak to the person and just let them be aware. If I can speak to them, I'll like, I'll speak to them and give them the time verbally. As far as the two-hundred-dollar fine, that's what the fine is for a commercial vehicle. The only thing, what I explained to him was that the possibility of not removing the vehicle will lead to a two-hundred-dollar fine, and it could accrue to fines daily of two-hundred dollars, which will also lead to a citation. So I just wanted to be clear, um, I wanted to be clear on that. Um, also about mentioning about, a lot of times when we're enforcing, and not, most of the times when we're speaking of an infraction to someone, everyone is so quick to ask about another person. Everyone is so quick to say, well, what is this person doing, and what did you do about that? And I see this, and I see that. But they have no idea what we're already doing with those particular people. It's only two code enforcement offices right now. We're short-staffed. We are trying to do everything possible to work hard for this city, to make sure that people are in compliance, so that the council and the city could be pleased, as well as the residents. But it is very hard to please everybody, and we know that we can't do that. I even explained that with this whole program. I explained that this was something that the council was trying to do to give people, the residents, an opportunity, those workers who are working, to feed your family and to keep your, your business going, and also allow the other citizens availability for parking. So I try my best, and it, it is very difficult when we're being attacked for trying to have them to, uh, comply to rules that, that's not our rules. But everyone, you know, attacks us like, as if these are things that we're trying to do, and we're ver, we're very empathetic. We empathize with all the citizens, with all the homeowners. We know that you guys are working hard to feed your families, and we wish that, what I, we wish that you could have all these things that you need to have. But it's just, we aren't able to make all these things happen, because it is a residential community. And I've, I've been trying to drive that home to everyone that I speak to, and it has just been the most complicated, very hard, most, one of the most difficult situations that I ever had to face as a code enforcer. that I ever had to face as a code enforcement officer. But I just want everyone to know that we are trying very hard, when we see things, we're not oblivious, we try to address everything, even to the point when we're on our way to, to handle one situation, we're writing down something else, because we see, we see this over here, we know we have to get back to that, and we are covering all three wards. As far as the cones are concerned, we got most of all the cones that we've seen, I've been patrolling, we've been, all the wards, I even worked on the weekend, I worked Sunday. There were no cones that I saw. There's only one cone that's right there now, I'm, I'm not going to name the street, because there's a situation that's going on with upper, our higher officials concerning that. So until that agreement is completed, we will, we can't do anything with that situation. But as we see cones, we put a notification tag on the door, we let them know if it's not moved by X amount of time, the cones will be confiscated. And we also have conversations with these people and explaining, you cannot put cones or any other objects in a public street, or they will be confiscated. So these things are being addressed, we're not just ignoring them. I, I just, I just felt like, I, I wanted to clear that up, and I had to say that, because, you know, code enforcement, no matter what we do, what we do, what we don't do, it's always, it's just always something wrong, no matter how hard, you, you know, you try to help everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for your service. I completely understand. It's like a referee. Nobody likes a referee, even though they're doing their job. But I, I appreciate what Mr. Green is doing, I appreciate what Ms. Jones is doing, and hopefully we get fully staffed soon. But as I said, I, it's, it, as Ms. Jones said, it's a very tough job to enforce. There's another young man back here who.
Thank you, Ms. Tamika.
The citizens in here say, thank you, Ms. Tamika.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I love what I do, I really do.
And we appreciate what you do, thank you.
All right, thanks for letting me speak.
Mm-hmm. Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leo C. Wilson, senior Ward One resident. I've been up here for a while, I try to stay out of everybody's way, because they know I don't take crap from nobody. But now this is getting out of hand. I've been told, I don't have a problem stopping people doing major repairs in the street, as well in the, on their property, like dropping the engine, but now I'm told I can't even change the oil in my vehicle, which I can't, I'm disabled, but I'll have my son do it. The only thing I'm able to do is change maybe a flat tire. That's ridiculous. And my headlamps go out, you got to pop the hood, you got to go through a lot to change. You're going to tell me I can't replace my headlamp in my vehicle? Now, I'm going to be short and sweet. I paid for that property, paid in full. I worked hard to get it, I own it. I own the whole pit, all of it, driveway and all. Now, when it comes to something minor, like changing my oil, I'm going to change my oil. If you come and cite me, I got nothing, and the chief will tell you, I respect law enforcement. Because I did 24 years in law enforcement, I respect public works. But if you come on my, come to my home, and I'm changing my oil, you want to cite me? Fine, don't step on my property, send it to me in the mail, I'll deal with it in court. And if you do want to enforce stuff, pay my property tax, that's the only thing I got to pay on that house, property tax. If you want to pay my property tax, then you can tell me, you can control everything you don't want me to do on that property. But y'all getting ridiculous, you're telling me every little thing, you don't cut my grass? Come and cut my grass too. You don't do none of that. Now, that's be reasonable. Now, certain things, when I change, get the oil changed, I drain the oil, I collect the oil, the, all the other parts, I take it to the sanitation dump on Brownlee Station Road, the property disposal. I don't pour it down the curb, I don't put it in the sewage, nothing like that. And anything that left over that go in the trash, I put my trash out. I'm putting this city on notice. My property is my property, I control it. I mean, I, like I said, major stuff, I can understand, I'm all for it. But when you get into ridiculous, like you can't change your oil, that's ridiculous. I clean up the mess. I don't let the oil spill on the ground, none of that. Now, enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. I'll talk to you afterwards.
Another word?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening.
I am here to give my opinion on ordinance 11-2025, and it deals with having monitoring devices on the stop signs, and from what I understand, those will be cameras. I have lived in Glen Arden for 40 some years, more than 40 years, and I personally would not like to see our city become like Washington DC. This is Glen Arden, and I don't think that we need cameras everywhere, I have an issue with that. I think what should happen is we need to do first things first. We've spoken about the speed bumps. Those should have been laid down a long time ago. I have been asking about them, other people have been asking about them, and I don't know why they were put on hold, but I think the resolution came through like about three years ago, something like that. But anyway, I think that's something that should be done first, because that can slow down vehicles. Nobody's going to go zoom over a speed bump without receiving some kind of damage to their vehicles. And I think that that is one way for the citizens to be a little safer than what they are, and homeowners to have their properties not be run into if that speed bump is there. So I think that with us trying to put cameras there, that's a long term, from what I'm understanding, it's a long-term solution, because the person has got to get a ticket, it'll go to them in the mail or whatever, and then it's going, they either pay it or they don't pay it. So that's really not the solution to slowing the cars down and having them to stop at the stop signs. I also think that we need to go, we have other resources, and one of our resources is our, our police department. I understand they might have other things to do. However, when it comes to those children going to school, we should have officers, if we don't already have that, we should have officers out there on those streets, seeing to it that the children are safe. And it can be a person at each, especially on Glen Arden Parkway, it can be an officer at each block, visible, not sitting in your car, but visibly outside of the vehicle. I think police visibility is part of the solution, because nobody is going to run past a police officer speeding and running through a stop sign. So let's not put the cart before the horse, let's do the procedures, let's go step by step and have our city be safer, rather than us spending more money on cameras and that kind of thing. I'm not saying we won't have to go to cameras, we might have to go to that. However, let's do what we can first. Those things that are available to us, let's do that first. An hour, two hours on the street for officers, that shouldn't be anything, that should be nothing. Once those kids go into the school, then the officers can go and do what, I mean, let's be flexible, real sign, do things like that. So, and then in the afternoons, have your officers out there in the afternoons. Police visibility is very important, I really do believe that. Why are we paying money for officers if they're not there to help us when we need them? Having cameras, that's extra money from out of the citizens' pockets. Let's utilize what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to make one clarification on the, the stop sign cameras, this ordinance was presented by myself. The city is not paying anything for these cameras. Because of the data that we've seen, the, the police department has seen concerning people riding through stop signs, we've showed those on a, on, on the meeting where there is folks just riding at Glen Arden Parkway and Sermonical Place over in the Woodmore area, they just ride right through the stop sign, they don't even stop. Over here in Ward One, where we want to put this, then they're, they're, they're not permanent, they, they can be moved, they're portable, they can be moved from place to place after we get some kind of control. Over here where Glen Arden Woods School is, people are riding right through the stop signs. Those children walk to the school, to Savannah Woods down Glen Arden Parkway, they have to cross over, you know, and people are just riding through the stop signs. We have data that was taken by the stop sign camera persons to show in real time that people are just riding through these stop signs, they're not stopping. So we have to do something, we need to do something. And it was a citizen, Ms. Alita Hunter, that brought up the, over two years ago, the continuation of people just riding through Glen Arden Parkway, Johnson Avenue, and not stopping at the stop signs. So this is something that we want to implement to bring safety to the schoolchildren, to people, to, even with the summer coming on, and children will be out riding on skateboards, they'll be out on, on, on scooters, they'll be out, and you don't want someone just riding through a stop sign, and those children are out there on bicycles, and someone is hit. So this program does not cost us anything. In fact, Mr. Rob Carr is here, who presented this program to the city, and he will tell you that this program does not cost the city anything at all. Thank you.
And just to piggyback, I completely understand of exhausting different measures to see where we go. I will say, just from the pilot program that Captain Robertson and Chief put out there, there was a vast, like, difference in the traffic flow. Everybody, once word got out there that a camera was out at the stop sign, everybody stopped at a stop sign. I'm not on my son's Glen Arden Woods family chat, my wife is, she handles all that, but she would tell me in a family chat, uh, somebody posted, there's a camera at the stop sign, make sure you're stopping. And even when I went in to pick up my son, the assistant principal, who was getting ready to let everybody out to school, let all the parents know, hey, please stop at the stop signs, be aware that they are, they are, traffic measures in place, so please stop at a stop sign. And from there, you saw plenty of people stopping at the stop sign. Once those cameras moved, it went right back to business as usual. So I, I, I agree, we can try to exhaust all the measures. I would suspect that if those speed bumps aren't at the crosswalks, then people will go over the speed bumps and roll right past the stop sign. But we will, you know, we will, I think the, we have to go through a certain process for the speed bumps, any, not speed bumps, for the cameras, anyway. Hopefully, we can have the, the speed bump measures in place before, likely, before the cameras are installed, so that we can still get some data back that will show that is still an issue. But if it's not, then, you know, you know, you have been proven right. I see your hand. Come on, Ms. Wilson. Did you want to say something? Okay.
No, I remember saying that if we have to go to the cameras.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Then yes, but we can implement things, one, two, three, other things prior to that.
Yeah.
And I don't want it to, because I just don't want it to be so that, okay, the only way that that can be controlled of any kind is that there be a camera on your street. And so I just think that let's put into place those things that we can put into place.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Okay. So I wasn't disputing not to have, I don't recall saying, let's not do cameras at all.
No, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Vice President Ferguson?
Thank you, Council President. Piggybacking off of Ms. Wilson, the speed bump pilot was sponsored by Councilman Herring, I was the co-sponsor, I think it was 22, and it might have been 21, off of 22 budget.
It was three years ago.
Yeah, so it was, it was actually in 21, but the resolution has a 20, 2022 year, because we were in that fiscal year. So I agree with Ms. Wilson that we need to get that, get that implemented. Last month, I was down on Glen Arden Parkway, and Fisk stopped at a stop sign. I actually hadn't actually stopped, I was stopping, like rolling, then stopped. A car just went around me and went straight through the stop sign, and I watched it go right up to Glen Arden Elementary. A lot of those, regardless of where the people live, a lot of those people that's going to pick up their kids, they're, they are, they are not residents, but they, and I, I sat, and I just watched, I mean, they are bawling up there. So I think that it, it should be not only a, a speed bump there, or in those areas, but I do agree with Ms. Wilson that we should have an officer there, and we don't have cross walk patrol, so we should have an officer there. I mean, when it's like 3 o'clock, or around about that time, they are jetting up there, and I think, I think that it's, you know, not only for the, for the children, but even pedestrians, because he, he just went right around me, and another car coming from Fisk could have been going across. So I think that we should, I agree that we should post some officers there. And City Manager, can you elaborate on the status of the speed bumps? Thank you.
Yes. As mentioned, I just re-forated the feasibility study from our engineers with their recommendations. As requested, I believe you, the council would like to look at those locations, particularly those that are suggested on, in Ward One, to determine where the council feels as though they would like to do, place those speed bumps. But in the particular study, it shows, and it's mapped out, the locations for speed bumps based upon their recommendations, which we also received from a county traffic official who worked with them as well.
I'm in agreement with Councilman Herring, is that we live here. We know where they should go. And so especially paying someone to tell us where they should go, and we know where they should go. And again, there, it's a pilot program, so they, they can be rotated, but, you know, they fly up, you know, down Glen Arden Parkway, or they'll make that right, and they jet all the way up Hayes, then all the way around down Delwood, and, and I think that we should, if that's what's holding up the implementation of the program, then I think we should just go ahead on and leave it to the council to just go ahead on and name the streets and, and get the work started. Because at the end of the day, again, we live here, and so we know, and we see it. Thank you.
Is it brief? I don't want to go. Okay. Go. Thank you, Council President. I do have a question. Can, for the city manager, maybe you can pose this to the engineer or to the traffic person, can you put a speed bump at a stop sign?
There, there are certain traffic laws and regulations, and I think that was one of the reasons why we, we spoke of our engineers giving this particular assessment, to make sure we take those things in consideration. I definitely agree for the need of the speed bumps. I definitely agree for the need of the speed bumps. I think we do need to be cognizant of whatever the traffic laws are and where logistically those speed bumps can be placed, along with the input from the council of residents relative to, you know, where you want them and what you would suggest.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, speak up a little bit, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone on the council, the mayor. I don't want to forget anybody, the treasurer, the public works, police department, residents, everybody hot. I'm literally shaken while I'm standing here because this is in regards to the stop signs. Again, I had asked or proposed that we just put the flashing lights around the stop signs. I live right there where I can see Glen Arden Parkway and Johnson Avenue. I'm telling you, if we keep waiting for these speed bumps and we keep waiting for flashing lights around a stop sign, I have seen two kids almost get hit last week, one of them being my own. And I'm not saying something just because it's my own, because I care about all of the residents. This has gone on too long. It has gone on entirely too long. I wanted to run for council, but I couldn't. I prayed on it. I couldn't. Why can't, because I cannot sit for four years and issues come, issues come, but the big issues are not addressed. Or they are addressed, but then it's a roadblock. These, something has got to change in the next four years in the city of Glen Arden. But I'm gonna tell you, last week, I was called to hear a council member sit here and question the importance of having addressing the stop sign issue. And I'm gonna say Ward 1, but I know it's all the way down Glen Arden Parkway, but I meant Ward 1. My family settled here in 59. I'm not one boy back there. But it's an issue. And for someone to sit on a council and try to downplay it, that's a problem. I had a huge problem with that. I don't see why it's an emergency ordinance. Oh, you don't? What you want to wait for? Somebody get hit, killed, worse? I mean, then we, going back to Hayes Street, this is a question I have. Glen Arden, I mean, Johnson Court has not been identified as a street that's going to have the digital parking permits. But let me tell you what's gonna happen. When those cars have to move off of Hayes Street, they gonna flood Johnson Avenue, which is already an issue. You don't know how many times you're coming around that corner, somebody flying, they just fly around that corner all the time. There's gonna be wall-to-wall trucks and cars parked there when they have to move off of Hayes Street. And you know where they gonna come? Oh, cul-de-sac, oh, nobody's parked here. Let me just park right here. They block your driveways. They do everything. We need to be considered to have parking permits or something. During that time, there needs to be some signs up or some major enforcement. Because not only where they parked there, it's public parking, I get it. But everybody on that street, pretty much all the neighbors in Glen Arden, respect one another. If we know you live here, you park here, we're gonna respect that. But I'm talking about blocking your driveway. Gotta go out here and knock on doors and say, "Can you move your car because you blocking my driveway?" So when that project begins, we really need to think about that. And these stop signs, we talking about cameras, can we even, can we just go to the flashing lights first to see if that's gonna help? And yeah, it would be nice to have police officers out here. Maybe we need to sit down and talk to the police officers. How many do we have on staff? Can we get them out here? And it's not just the elementary kids, it's not just Glen Arden Woods, it's not just Judge Savannah Woods. It is, you got kids going to Duval, you got kids going to Roosevelt, you had kids, we are a central hub. You got kids going to Largo. There's kids everywhere. So we need to sit down and find out what time these buses and these kids are walking to the bus stop. I don't just care about mine. I care about all. I care about all. And up there by Judge Savannah Woods is treacherous up there on Church Street. It is horrible. I have a girlfriend who lives on Grant Drive, and her kids just come at Grant Drive, those cars, the way they park, those little kids are walking. They're little kids. They might go across the street, and here come a car flying down. I mean, we gotta do better. I am praying for whoever gets in for the next four years, but we cannot have another four years or another eight years. Great things have been done, but when big issues come, we don't, we, things are not moving quick enough. And I'm looking at you all, but I'm not putting it, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. I'm not. I'm just saying, as a citizen, as a resident, it's bothering me so bad that day in, day out, nighttime, daytime, doesn't matter, they are running through those stop signs. And it is, that one, that video that was shown, that big SUV went straight through. There was no stop, there was no nothing. It's like, oh, okay, I'm gonna go. There's no trees right there. So I just ask City of Glen Arden, please listen to the residents and take what we're saying to heart. And more residents, you need to come out and you need to speak, because just talking to your neighbors is not it. Come out and speak. Then the issues will get resolved. Did my timer go off? It didn't? It did? Oh, that was your phone? Oh. We still got loose dogs running around Ward 1.
I just want to say that there have been a lot of resolutions and a lot of passed and good things on the books. And a lot of things have been put, have taken a long time in this four years. So not an excuse, but a fact. Just in this term alone, we have had turnover with our city managers. A lot of times when we do resolutions that we do, after that, they are implemented by the administration. We have legislators, and then the administration will put it forward. So we have had, in these four years, Mr. Simpson is our third city manager. So therefore, when one leaves, then they have to, you know, try to catch up and do things. So that's all I can say, is that, you know, we legislate and we try to get it together, but we had turnovers. Like I said, three city managers, and so, and that's administration. Thank you, Council President.
Mr. President, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, and Ms. Hunter, I appreciate your comments because I have been talking about the speeded on Glen Arden Parkway for years, running the stop signs, you know, trying to get things done. And you're right, it does take too long. The speed bump resolution that we proposed was almost three years ago, and it should have been implemented then. You know, then you will have a better idea of what you really need moving forward when it comes down to slowing down traffic and safety issues. Again, and it really bothers me when we always talk about Glen Arden Parkway, Glen Arden Parkway. But like you said, Church Street is a nightmare. And we've been trying to get a sidewalk on Church Street for years, you know. And when I bought it the first time, it wasn't put in the budget, so I had to bring it the second time to get it in the budget. You know, now that it's in the budget, now we're trying to get it done. And I just think that we need to, the city is not, shouldn't be sectionalized. When you have one issue with Glen Arden Parkway, then you know we got a couple of other schools in this community. Look at all the schools. See if that problem is happening at other schools. See if it's happening at Ardmore. See if it's happening at Savannah Woods, you know, sidewalk issues, you know. Okay, we got a sidewalk issue here, let's look somewhere else and see where there may be a sidewalk issue. And you're right, it shouldn't take this long. I'm completely, nah, I'm not surprised. You know, let me just say, that speed bump program should have been done a long time ago, a long time ago. We should not be even talking about that. We should be saying right now, do we want to put in permanent speed bumps or not? You know, and that's for that, and I'm with you. I'm just waiting for the day I have to walk out there and see our ambulance in our intersection because somebody's child got hit, the way they fly down that street, and the way they don't stop at the stop signs. And I've been saying, they start at the light at 7:04, and they don't stop until they hit Delwood. And that's, and they be going full speed. Like I said, even on my street, I see a guy roll through from Grant, at the top of Grant, and he roll right on through down to Fisk. You know, don't stop at the stop sign. So it is, it's a two-pronged approach, like I said before. Yeah, the cameras are nice, yeah. But again, we got a big city, and so we need to have enforcement also at these intersections on a regular basis. And I do, did see the police at Johnson and Grant over the weekend, I think it was, or a couple of days ago. So they were there, and it slowed vehicles down. But it always give people a second thought, a second chance to think that maybe there is a police officer somewhere around at this intersection. But you gotta, we gotta be out there, we gotta be, we just gotta make sure that we're doing what's best in the best interest of the community and the safety for our citizens. Because again, the speed, I mean, and I guess my issue is too, you can hear them. You can hear them flying through the streets at full speed, nonstop, because they have these loud mufflers. And you can hear them. I can hear them from my house, and I can hear them not run, go all the way from Polk Street all the way down Tyler, all the way up Glen Arden Parkway, all the way back down my street, back up to Polk, nonstop. Because you can hear the revving of the engine, and it doesn't, it doesn't miss, it doesn't slow down at all. So you hear that. So again, you need community policing, you need them to be out there. You need them to, I mean, if you hear a complaint about it, I mean, you ain't even gotta roll, I mean, they ain't gotta do nothing. They can sit right there in Glen Arden Parkway on a Saturday and just wait. And you'll hear that car start up, and he starts flying around the neighborhood like it's a track, like it's a racetrack. But it's just, it's just being proactive instead of reactive. We don't want to have to react when somebody gets hit, because somebody's gonna get hit. Like I said, I've been in the city a long time. I remember somebody ran a stop sign and ran right over somebody right in front of me, you know. But, I mean, that's what we invest so much in the police department for, you know, to enforce, to slow traffic down. That's one of my biggest issues. We don't have high crime, so, you know, slowing traffic down is a major issue that we're gonna have to have, we have to definitely look at. But again, I appreciate your comments. I definitely sympathize with you. I see what you're saying. And I'm telling you, it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen. It's just a matter of time. All right, thank you.
I just want to add, do you have something to say? Okay, I just want to add, you come to the podium, some people here, just want to add, so there. First of all, just to stand up for staff, I do agree that there has been turnover the last three years. And I just want to give Mr. Simpson some credit for the things that he has done in a year that he's been here. And it's still being short staffed. I don't think we have a public works person. We just got Mr. Green not too long ago. We just got Tamika Jones not too long ago. So we're revving up, and this is a very important issue. And there's, and there are different ways we could tackle the issue. A speed camera, not a speed camera, a stop sign camera will be perfect. It will act as a police officer to ticket those people who are running those stop signs. Not only that, I mean, we are in the 21st century. Policing has been, the whole policing industry has been innovative where there are license plate readers where we could catch criminals coming into our city via a license plate reader, and then a cop can be dispatched and say, "Hey, there's a stolen car in your city." And then we could, you know, stop crime before it happens. That's being proactive instead of reactive. There are so many grants that we have gotten in a police station for policing and public safety. And there's more out there that we can get that can help with the traffic studies and safety in the city. And I think that needs to be looked at and seriously considered so that we can be safe in this city. Applaud the officers for, you know, the work that you guys do as regards to, you know, the major crimes and everything. And I think that, you know, Chief Bryant is looking to other ways so we can cut down on the things like speeding and running stop signs and pedestrian safety. So just want to, just make that, make people, citizens aware. Because I know some people are wary about, oh, we are talking about police, and police get this grant, and police is doing this. But police serves, I want to take it back from just saying police and really emphasize on public safety. Because public safety affects everyone, and it's more than just stopping someone with a gun or stopping someone trying to kidnap. It goes all the way down to run stop signs. That's public safety. So, yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things and make sure we on the same page with the city of Glen Arden in reference to some of the things we're trying to obtain and rectify in the city of Glen Arden. We're trying to do some proactive things. We're trying to move forward. Heard several council members talk about measures they've been trying to take for the past four years. Thursday will be three years for me and the city of Glen Arden as chief of police. And I totally agree with you guys, moving forward and trying to get things done. And that's one of the biggest things I see is, as a city, trying to move forward. Several things as a police department I've been trying to get done, and it's not getting done. And I feel real bad about it. I feel bad for our officers. I listened to a lot of the things being said about the police department, things we're trying to do. And I gotta say, I gotta speak up for the police officers. We're 15 officers on the street. We're allotted for 22, to include myself. You got the chief, the captain, lieutenant, and I got 15 officers, so that's 18. We're slotted for 22. So we're down by four officers and one sergeant at this particular time, or total four, three officers and one sergeant. We run a 24-hour shift here compared to other municipalities. Right now, I have two officers working. They're working 12-hour shifts. Because I have two other officers that's in mandatory training. When you have 20, 15 to 20 officers, and you run 24 hours, and people gotta have days off, and you're running four 10-hour shifts, you don't have that many officers. Sometimes people think that, well, the officers, we don't see the officer, we don't see the officers. I'm making officers work mandatory overtime, whereas for past hour overtime. Now I got officers working for comp time because we dedicated, we took the oath. We stand up for the city. You can ask some of the people, you can ask President Curtis. I'm out there at the schools. I'm directing traffic. People see me like, "Chief, what are you doing out here directing traffic?" Because I'm dedicated, committed to my city, trying to make it better. I heard about the people running the stop signs. That's why I'm out there. And we're trying to do proactive measures. We're trying to grow the city. That's why we're trying to bring speed bumps into the city. That's why we're trying to do speed cameras. We're trying to grow. That's why we're trying to build license plate readers into the city. So if you look at the stats that I put in the monthly reports, officers go out here and they make over 200 stops, traffic stops a month. They issue tickets, so they out there doing their jobs. But we still gotta support our citizens. We gotta answer calls for service. We gotta make sure the calls are being answered. We get calls from the dispatcher. We gotta answer the call for service. If you call the police, we gotta be there to answer your call. It might be a life or death situation, phone assault, you know. So we doing what we have and what we have. So I would like to see with this new council coming in, more police officers. I'd like to see us get a police building, a police facility, more officers as the city grown. We need more officers. If we don't get that, I'm gonna have to come to the council, and we're gonna have to shut down 12 at night, like a lot of other municipalities, and have the county run it, which I don't think will be fair to our city because I don't think they get the quality of service that they deserve. Because this is our city, the city of Glen Arden, just what we took the oath for. So that's what I'm asking for, and that's what we need, you know. I'm dedicated to the city, and that's what we need. So all the stuff about, well, we need to see the police here, we need to see the police there. I don't see the police, the police out there. I see many citizens, and they see me out there, and they see my officers out there. If you don't see the police, that don't mean they out there. They're not out there. Like I said, I got two officers out there on the street tonight, you know. I got the officers that's working part-time, listening to their radios to back my officers up that's working tonight, because they're working mandatory 12-hour shifts because I got two other officers in training. So we out there, but I need the city council and everybody else to support the police department. I need more police officers. I need police facility. I need better pay for my officers. I need retirement for my officers and for the city so we can keep my officers. In my three years here, I lost 12 out of 16 officers in a matter of two and a half years. So let's get this straight, and hopefully the next administration, we can do better and keep it moving and make this a better place, a better city, so we can keep growing like the city and so we can keep doing our job with the tools and resources that we need. So not pointing fingers at anybody. We're just trying to grow the city. So I just want you guys to know where the police department stands. We took the oath so we can continue to do our job. So we're gonna be there, you know, with, if you like us or don't like us, we're gonna do our job, and we're gonna continue to be there. Not one citizen can tell you that they called Chief Bryant, and he didn't return their call. Because I go to their house, I answer my call 24/7, and I'm gonna handle the call, and my officer's gonna do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, the problem is, no one can hear you back there online. Look, so, sir, please come up. This has been an extra.
Just two questions. One, how long Woodmore been here?
One, how long Woodmore been here?
Woodmore's been here since, what, 2015?
Two, how many officers you got on the force? I'm talking about patrol officers. I thought, on the condition of Woodmore, they should be up to 20 to 22 officers on the condition of, within two or three years from the time Woodmore was opened up. This is ridiculous, they should be up to at least 30, 35 officers. No wonder you have a problem with not getting proper coverage. You need a police officer, simple play. If you only got 15 since Woodmore been here, that's crazy. That's crazy.
Isn't, how, we're budgeted for 20.
I have to look at, no, we're budgeted for 22.
We're budgeted for 22, yeah. They just not fill the positions.
Well, I think that, so, a couple of things I want to point out. So again, one, as we're about to wrap up, one, I truly appreciate everyone who came out to speak. This is what I've been advocating for, for so long, because a lot of our meetings are very empty, and we don't get to hear your voice, and then we're left to represent you with, you know, our ideas and only the ideas that we may hear from our neighbors. But it's great to hear what you have to say, just like we put a pause on the enforcement of the, the commercial vehicle program, because we hadn't heard back from people. We've had it out there for a long time, and then we implemented, and then once people saw how it affected them, then they came and they spoke, and we put a pause on enforcement, and it was great to have that feedback. But we need community involvement on the municipal level, on a municipal level, on a county level, and on a state level, because it all matters, and federal, of course. I want to say that, you know, I agree that we need to, our government needs to be more efficient for us. But I also don't want to, also don't want to discount the work that we have done in the city, whether it be expungement fairs to help people clear their record for, you know, misdemeanors, whether it's the Intergenerational Poverty Fund, whether it's trying to build community by having these programs like Glen Arden Day, or giving out grants to our local businesses who have been affected by COVID. We have done some things, and I agree we need to do more, and safety is very important, and we need to step that up. And we're doing, we're going to do better. We're doing the best that we can right now with what we have with the turnover and being short-staffed. And I hear a lot of, oh, we need more officers, and I agree we need more officers. I agree we need this and that, but also understand with, with, with everything that we're asking for, you know, it costs. So I, again, just appreciate you guys coming out, and I look forward to seeing you guys at future meetings. Our next meeting will be next Monday at 7:30. Councilman Herring just wants to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know, and the Council President just mentioned it, we will be having an expungement fair. Councilman Harrison and myself are hosting it along with the city council. Basically, if you have a criminal record that you need expunged, come on out. We'll be having, we'll have like about eight to 10 attorneys there, they're gonna fill out the paperwork, we're gonna submit it to the courts and get, try to get your record expunged. This is our third one. So far, we've expunged almost 200 residents, 200 residents with this expungement fair. The county, the state attorney office says we have one of the largest, and people are just amazed at how many people we do, records we are able to expunge, because they say one event day only had like 20 people. So we have 211 people registered for this event on Saturday, so we may have maybe close to 280, maybe even 300 people come out to try to get expunged. I mean, it's just about giving people a second chance, that's what this is all about. And I'd say the council come together, and we all pull together to get this thing going. It isn't just me and Councilman Harrison, we host it, but it takes all seven of us, as well as staff, as well as volunteers to get this done, and there's just one way to give back. So, you know, if you know anybody that need a second chance, you know, a lot of people can get, a lot of people don't know they can get their record expunged for free. It's just a matter of coming out and let their attorney see your charges and see what they are. So, yeah, just from 10 to 2 on Saturday. So, all right, thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, it's been a great program. We've, I think we've all been with the leadership of Harry, not Harry, sorry, Councilman Herring and Councilman Hairston. We've all participated in helping out with that, whether it be us on computers or, you know, just meeting the need of our community. But I think what should be highlighted is that even if you, in the state of Maryland, I've been a victim of being falsely accused of something. And even though the case got thrown out, that was still on my record. And in a state of Maryland, even if you're falsely accused and the case is thrown out, it will stay on your record. So, you know, for people who don't know that, you need to, you just check your record and see if you have been falsely accused, and that will still need to be expunged from your record. And so, and just to reiterate, it's state, so this doesn't do the federal, right?
Right, this is only for the state of Maryland. We don't do DC or any other state outside or federal, so it's only for the state of Maryland.
Correct.
Yeah, and then like, and like the Council President said, I mean, I know, I've seen it happen. It didn't even happen with me, somebody went down there and made a false accusation. All they gotta do is go down to the commissioner's office, say, this person did this to me, raise their hand, say, yeah, I'm telling the truth, bam, you in case search the next day with a record. And I think Maryland need to do something about that, because that's so unfair. You know, because it's gonna, it basically affects your, affects everything, because then you don't know it's there until you go get a job, and they say, you know, you got a record here for this and this and this. You're like, I don't know what you're talking about, you know, so, yeah. So definitely check it, go to case search, check your record, make sure you ain't got nothing out there. If you do, come on down, we try to get it expunged.
And it's Saturday?
Saturday, at 10 to 2.
10 to 2, Saturday here.
Here at 10 to 2. We'll be upstairs in the gold room.
All right, well, the time is, there's nobody online left to speak? Sorry. All right, the time is 8:57, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. How can I help you, man?